Hello and welcome to another edition of the Get Growing Weekly Work Session with Get Oiling. I'm Coach Ashley, joined today by Julie of our team. Hello, welcome. We're excited. We're excited to have you here today. Apologies if there's any lag on my end here. I'm not in my normal place where we film, but as you're coming in, if you would, let us know where in the world you are. Today, we're going to be talking about how you can create an online course in under an hour. And we'll talk about why you might even want to consider doing something like that as a brand partner. When you got started sharing Young Living, it's pretty solid chance you didn't think, yeah, you know what? One day I'm going to create an online course, right? Those two things don't necessarily connect, but today I'm going to share with you some ways that it actually can. And because of the new tools that we have released inside of Get Oiling, you have the ability to do this quickly and easily. And you don't have to be an expert in things like building online courses to do a really great job of this. I'm going to show you because we are going to get one done in the span of our call today, which is really exciting. So, welcome everybody. Don't be shy. Come into the chat. I'm in Pennsylvania today. Of course Julie is in Florida. We've got Vermont and Arizona here. Keep it coming, you guys. We are thrilled to have you. I'm going to go ahead. We're going to pop out of video and get into some slides here. I want to make sure that we've got as much time as possible to, to work with you guys. By the way, we've got more. Hey, thanks for letting us know where you are. Panama City, Minnesota, colorful Colorado, Birmingham, I think that's Alabama, New Hampshire, New Jersey, Oklahoma City, Ontario, but from PA. Awesome. I am visiting and helping out my grandma this week. So awesome to have you guys here today. Keep it coming. Introduce yourself in the chat. We have an incredible, incredible community of Team YL who meets here every single Thursday at noon to learn new ways to share and grow Young Living. And today we're talking about how to do that with an easy to create online course. So let's get into it. I'm going to get out a video here because I said we were going to and I'm lagging on that here. But yeah, let's get into. I have a. Here, let me see if it'll let me do this. I want to share my screen. I have some slides for you. There they are. Beautiful. So today we are going to talk about how you can create an online course in under an hour using a tool that we now have called the Get Oiling AI Class Creator. So if you are familiar, if you've been around using Get Oiling, especially here in the last few months, you see that we have a Write With AI feature that is available for your use to make it easier for you to write things, to create new campaigns, messages, figure out the right way to say something on your website. Really wherever you need to use words is a great starting point for you. And today we're going to figure out how to use that same kind of technology to help you get an online class created quickly. So let's talk first today, we're going to talk about how to outline a course that can help you grow Young Living, or specifically, we're going to talk about how this is something that's actually going to make a difference for you. If you're here today and you're wondering, well, why on earth should I even consider having an online course? We're going to get into that question here and some depth at the top of the call. Then we'll talk about the architecture of an online course, like what actually goes into having one in your Get Oiling account? Then we're actually going to create one here together. And of course, as always, live help and Q and A is something that happens throughout this call. So there is, if you're here live on Zoom, there is a Q and A feature. Please make sure you are asking questions in the Q and A so that we don't miss anything that you've asked. Julie is here and able to, to volley questions there. And of course, if it's something that we need to cover live here, then that's something that we can do as well. So go ahead and get those questions added to the Q and A, even if they have nothing to do with the topic of today's call. This is an open call for you, any brand partner, anybody who's sharing Young Living every single week, an opportunity for you to get the help that you're looking for in a hands-on environment. Now, if you're watching this in the future as a replay on YouTube, go ahead and head over to getoiling.com/weeklyworksession and sign up so that you can join us on our live calls. Again, we host these every Thursday at noon Eastern US time. And if you would like to set aside dedicated space on a call like this one, we actually save the second half of the call for that one-on-one help if you reserve it. So if you go to getoiling.com/webstatereview, you can ask for any kind of help or support and we can sit down just like we will today at the end of the call and you can actually reserve dedicated space during that time to work on whatever it is you are working on. And then finally, if you love the idea of all of this, but you just, you just don't have the time or you want to hand it to someone else to do for you, we've got you covered. You can go to getoiling.com/concierge to learn more about our team that can help you get things done. All right, so let's get into this. Why would you even want to create an online course? Your Young Living brand partner, your goal is to help people transform their lives using life-changing products. So first and foremost, why you might want to consider having an online course is that there are millions of brand partners around the world and we're all online and we're all looking for new people to share with. And so if everybody says I'm a Young Living brand partner, then what's the difference between going to you versus another person versus another person? Well, the reason why we go to the person we go to when we get started with something like this is because we have trust, right? So what we're able to do is build trust by leading, not with Young Living first, right? Because somebody that doesn't know you yet, or especially importantly, if somebody doesn't know Young Living yet, they're not going to care about what Young Living does, right? But if they know you, if they know your brand, they, they know the conversations they can have with you that are important to them, they will then know that you are someone that they can listen to, you are someone that they can trust. And of course, the people who listen to you and trust you are the people who become your future customers, right? So what you're able to do is instead of putting yourself out there and saying, my name is Jane Young Living Jones, you can say, I'm Jane and I help women manage their stress better so that they can live more fulfilling lives. And then later on in the conversation, right? We can talk about the products that we use to get that done. Does that make sense? So this is also with an online course, and this is one of my favorite ways to do this with Get Oiling. It's a passive way to introduce Young Living products in a relevant setting. So if you maybe have a challenge or something that's focused around an end goal. So maybe we are greening our, we're greening our cleaning closet, right? So we have a mini course on how to green your cleaning closet and it will absolutely be introducing Young Living product, but it's alongside important information that they need to hear before they even decide to use Young Living, right? They need to maybe learn about the toxins and the products that they already use. They need to learn about the things that those things do to your body, et cetera, right? To our, to our ecosystems. So this is an opportunity for you to get this in front of them 24/7/365 without having to beg them to go and sit in a, you know, in a room at your local library to hear you speak about this. They could do this anytime and it's like having a class that you can use anytime where again, we can create context that's important to them, build that trust first by not saying, let me sell you this thing, but to say, I'm going to help you get an outcome that you're looking for, right? And then I will along the way make some suggestions for you. And then finally, having an online course, and similar to having your own website, it positions you not as a hobbyist or just another person who has a profile on social media. It positions you as a professional credible authority, right? Who knows what you're talking about and who helps people solve important problems. So I hope that if you don't see it yet, that you do soon, that having some kind of an online course is going to be a really helpful thing to you, even if in a very passive way to position you as someone that people ought to be listening to. And of course, those who listen are going to follow your recommendations and get started with you as your customer. All right. So who wants one? So we are here. Are we ready to create an online course? Before we actually go in and start creating one, let's review what it looks like inside Get Oiling. All right. So I'm going to give you an example. This particular example is one of, one that would be created for free. So it'd be like a free course that this person would be using to get leads or to grow a community. Oh, excuse me. So first, our online courses are housed inside of vaults inside of a private member area. Know what this basically entails is there is a place on your website where someone would sign in and then access private materials, right? That's a member area. So somebody clicks a link on your website, they go to a place where they log in and then they land here, your member area. Now, inside of a member area, you can have multiple vaults. Now, these vaults are where your online course experience lives. Vaults can also be used for communities, for memberships, for coaching programs, for private client coaching. We've got yoga studios that operate out of these holistic practices operate out of these. And so on, you've got a lot of different ways that you can use these vaults. But today, of course, we're talking about how to create an online course. So those are vaults. And then finally, inside of this vault, if we click to open, so if we look, we're going to click this top one, the holistic hideaway, the home of the life by design challenge. We're going to visit that vault. When we go inside, you can see that inside the vault, we have a page, an online class, and even a discussion room. Now, for the purposes of, of time today, we're going to create a bare minimum class, which is going to be a vault with an online class inside it. And then we'll set it up so that you can share it. Now, if you want to add pages like this start here page, if you want to add a discussion room, of course, those are things you can optionally add. Now, inside of an online class, you have lessons and you do have a number of different options as to how you make those lessons available. And then once you go into a lesson, you can have an image like this one. You can have video, you can embed sway presentations. Like if you guys use Grow Workspace, you're probably very familiar with those. You can have downloads and you can even have discussion inside of these individual lessons. Okay, so we're going to create an online course. Here's our order of operations. We're going to first decide what problem we're solving and for whom we are solving that problem. Then we will outline the steps to solve that problem. And what we're going to do to save a ton of time today is use AI to outline the steps to solve the problem. Then we'll use that outline to create our online class. So that's one of those structures, right, that, that creates this. We'll then add, we'll create a vault that that online class will be added to. And then finally, we'll set the vault up for sharing because the vault is the door to that content. All right. And don't worry if that's a little bit much and you're not really fully sure of how this works. Don't worry, it's going to be recorded. You can watch the replay, you can rewind. And most importantly, you're going to see how to do this so that you can actually create one in your own account and experience what it would feel like for one of your future customers or clients to access it. Okay, so if you're ready to create one, let's get into this. And of course, we will keep the floor open for live help and Q and A. Now I want to go and see here real quick. In the chat, let me open that up here. Tell me, um, who has an idea for a course? Maybe there's an outcome that you're wanting to help create for somebody. Who's got an idea for one that you're maybe already chewing on? Raise your hand for me or just let me know in the chat. Hey, Colette, I'm going to, is it okay to bring you out to chat? Let me see. Okay, I'm going to bring you out to chat. I also see, okay, healthy household, non-toxic household, better sleep, insects and sun. Oh, I love it. Okay, so Colette, I'm going to bring you out. Hi, welcome. You can unmute yourself.
Hi.
Hey, how's it going?
Good.
Good, good. Okay, so, um, so we're going to run through this and I know you have some like, because I work with you sometimes. So I know you, you probably have some very specific ideas, uh, but, but we're going to go really kind of top level with this. But first tell me, um, who are you trying to help and what are you trying to help them get done?
We help divorced Christians overcome loneliness and find a loving spouse without shame.
Oof, okay, this is a tall order for AI. Let's see how right it gets it. So what we're going to do is we're going to go over into, uh, over here in our member area, right here. We're going to go to classes. So that's the first thing we're going to do. We're going to go to create class. And we're going to use our class creator tool now, Colette, because I know that you have, with what you've just shared is very specific. It might be best for you to actually use this step here and we'll talk about that here in just a second. But for the sake of, I mean, really, I'm kind of curious to see what AI could do with what you said. Uh, so let's use this class creator tool. So if you could rattle that off for me one more time, please. So this is, what is your class about? Uh, and separating who it's for, because we are going to put that in a different field here. So, um, this is helping, um, how, how to find a loving spouse after divorce?
Correct. How to overcome loneliness, how to overcome loneliness and find a loving spouse.
Okay. Okay, so how to overcome loneliness and find a loving spouse? And this is going to be for Christian.
Divorced Christians.
Men and women who are divorced. Okay. And what kind of tone, uh, would you say that this would be? And I know, I know that, because you and your husband work together. Uh, and I know that, that your tone is, is fairly straightforward, right? Kind of direct and to the point. Um, collectively with you guys, like how you deliver content together, is it still that or would you say that he brings in a different element?
No, he's blueprint, so he's even more cold than I am.
All right. Okay, so, so we'll, we'll, we'll put this, um, gentle, um, and affirming. How about that? Let's, let's just, yeah, let's, let's see, let's see what they come up with. All right, because you are going to be modifying this obviously. So we're going to create the class outline. It may take a couple of minutes because the AI does need to do its thing. I'm also not on my normal wifi speed and we're also running Zoom. So this might take a couple of minutes, uh, but you know, where you have something that's, this is very signature program-y, what we're talking about here, Colette. And in that particular case, um, what might be most effective would be to use the outline for it. But here we go. Let's see what they came up with. So understanding loneliness is the first module, healing and self-rediscovery, attracting a loving spouse. I'm kind of familiar with what you're working on and this isn't very far off, is it? How about that? So, uh, so the first, first things first, um, when you're, when you guys are using AI for this purpose, make sure that you read through this and if it's really far off base, you may want to click go back so that you can maybe modify the input to what you've given the AI, right? Uh, but, but this is, I, this, this is pretty, pretty, pretty close. You know, for, for not knowing your expertise and perspective, right? So let's go to next step. Beautiful. Okay, so we're just creating the class. We can retitle it, right? And you can actually go in and this is the fabulous thing here that we can do. This is now in outline format. So we can say that if we want to, to rename our lessons, we can reword the descriptions. We can choose to go ahead and allow discussion and even add our copy to start discussion if we are going to have discussion, right? So typically, before this feature was added, you would have to go and do this for every single lesson, one by one. And for some of us, really pouring into one lesson at a time, if that's how you like to work, if, if that's your sort of, um, your style of creating, uh, then more power to you. It works just as well as it ever has. Um, I personally find and Colette, I'm glad that it's you that raised your hand first because I know you're more of a red, can we please just get it done now person, um, as am I. This would really, this allows, yep, and this, this allows for creating really quickly. And so if maybe just, maybe for instance, if embracing power and intention was something that you wanted to have after radiating self-love and confidence, we can actually drag these and reorder them, right? We can, we can change the names of the modules. We can do all of that here. Now, we can go straight to no vault, just create the class. We're happy with what's here. We're gonna, oh, you can also add lessons if you want to. I'm going to delete that or maybe if you didn't like one of these, you could remove it, um, and so on. So we're going to go create the class just with what we have now. And it's done. So these are topic level stuff that's in here. Obviously, I would encourage you to consider adding to this. Um, you know, so maybe use the prompt that's here to create, create a quick video. If you have other resources along these lines, so think for instance, for anybody who would be interested in, um, creating a course that maybe introduces oils or Young Living product in a step-by-step fashion, this could be a really great opportunity to maybe plug in some of your Grow Workspace resources or other content partner resources that teaches product or teaches concepts. So you could actually plug those things in here. You could embed them. Uh, if you have video, of course, you can add that here, uh, but you have all of this, uh, basically ready to go. And then, uh, what we want to do to complete our online class is right here. If we say how to create on deep connections and find a living spouse overcoming loneliness after divorce. Let's see, we're going to give a short online class summary. I'm going to copy this and we could even use AI for this purpose. So short online class summary. So I'm going to say, I'm going to go to Write With AI. I'm going to say, write a short online, write, write a short summary for an online class titled, paste. I'll put quotes in here. And I'll tell it to encourage visitors to click on, or, or, let's see, to get started. Yeah, I was encourage visitors to get started with the content and remind them that we have live office hours calls at 2:00 PM Eastern Time on Tuesdays. So we'll hit write and we'll let it write for us.
Where did you get the deep connection? You just added that yourself?
AI did that.
Okay.
Yeah, it's pretty cool, right? So let's copy this. Copy to clipboard and we can go down here. We will paste that right here. All right. And so we're going to modify this just a little bit. So we'll say in this online class. Let's see, we can say we, right, we'll modify that just a little bit. Perfect. All right. And I'm actually, I'm going to copy this because we're going to use some of this same copy in the vault. Don't think that you have to come up with something brand new everywhere you look. Um, this is going to be off to the side. Um, and so we'll say here, you know, dig into the lessons on this page to get started. And don't forget to join us on an upcoming live call, right? We'll just pop that there, pop that there. We're good to go. So we're going to save. And we have an online class. We are over 50% done with what we need to do, which is pretty exciting. So now we just need to create a vault for it. And we just go here to create vault. And I'm going to come down here to about this vault and hit paste. And I'm also going to come back over here and copy this because this is going to be the same title as my vault. All right, and we'll say welcome. Click one of the options below to get started. Right? Uh, we're going to go ahead and save this. And then we'll go in and we'll add our content. So here's our content. We're going to add our class, an existing class. And that is this one. Add class. And save. Now we are literally almost done. The last thing that we need to do is work out how we want to allow people to get access to this. Now, Colette, what is your goal for this program? Is it, um, is this going to be a free community? Is it going to be a, a program, uh, multi-payment? Like what, what do you foresee this being?
So all of the above. It'll start as free and I have a lead group, you know, for people to get help there on Facebook. But eventually a program, I'd love to have it just be videos people watch and maybe even coaching if I decide to go that far.
Okay, fantastic. So but what, when people get access to what we've just created, they're initially, they're, they're coming in and joining something that's free, right? And then you would maybe have opportunities to purchase once they're inside here?
Yes, this I would like them to purchase.
Okay, perfect. So what we would do here is we would require payment to access this. And then we would put, let's see, anyone with the link. And then of course, this is our link that we would be sharing. Uh, we don't have Stripe set up, so we can't actually finish this here, um, on this particular account. Uh, but you would be setting up, what do you want to charge for it, et cetera? And then you would basically treat this like your sales page. So in this course, and actually we can literally just, oops, that's not it. Um, let me come back over here to our vault content and I'll just copy our guy from down here. And I'm going to put him into this description here for the checkout page. Beautiful. And off we go. So we'll save that. Now what you can, of, of course, there are additional things that you can do. This, in this particular case, um, this is going to send them to, uh, it'll open up the vault and let them in. So you don't have to put in a different URL, but you know, you could do things like putting in custom confirmation pages, et cetera. But everything here is ready to go. And so now what we can do is we can go copy here. I'm going to go over here and, um, let me see, I'm going to log out of the member area here. I'm also going to log out of Jane's account. And then I'm going to come over here to go and see that page. Okay, so because we don't have the payment set up, it's not letting us do it. So, um, here, let me log back in as Jane here. Wrong one. It's not here. Try this. So you have a couple of options here. If you're going to be, um, if you're going to be offering this as something that's paid and it's a program, like you just mentioned, Colette, you would probably want to have something like a sales page, uh, unless you are having maybe a call with somebody before you place them into that vault. Uh, but essentially what we're doing at this point is setting up our sharing options. And then you do have a couple and we do have a few minutes. I could show you how to do this. Uh, if you want to go ahead and brand it and make it pretty, uh, let me, um, let me hop in real quick and make sure that I'm in a good Canva account to use. And, um, and I can actually show you guys how you can get all of this set up, um, visually, pretty quickly as well. So is, does that, um, how's that feel? The idea of being able to just kind of get all of that in really quickly? Does that?
That's amazing. I have been stressing over this for six months and I get zero done. I'll have this done by tomorrow.
Exactly.
By tonight.
Yeah, exactly. And then of course, the, once it's in there and you've got everything dumped out of your brain, you're not thinking about, oh, when will I find the time? You can actually go in and start, um, you know, really making great what you've got, right? Like you can actually go in and start making modifications and perfecting it, right? All right. So I'm in Canva now. So let me go back over here. And let's, um, let's go look here real quick for a cover photo. The cover photo, I generally prefer to use something that's patterned, that's kind of neutral, um, or maybe like, um, excuse me, something even like this would be great. But I'll show you, we can just go into Canva and create something here. I'm going to use blog banner as a preset. Although if you guys have seen the tech tips cheat sheet that we have, um, that is something that is, we did a dedicated work session to that, uh, a few months back. That has the actual, um, perfect dimensions. So if you're looking for something that fits perfectly, um, then you could certainly use what's there as well. But let's, um, Colette, you just recently moved to Florida, right? Do you want a beach?
I love the beach. It's all over my website is beach.
Perfect, perfect. So we'll go to elements. Uh, we will go to, we'll search for beach and then we'll go to photos. So that's actually the one that I used. And it's, that's nice and tranquil and it's kind of pink, kind of evoking love a little bit there. So let's try that. We'll set that as the background. We'll send it to Get Oiling. And there we go. Once it's added, we'll pop that in. All right, we'll crop it based on the screen width. So it'll show up nicely. Now, the main photo needs to be at least 200 by 200 pixels. So when you hover over, you can see the, the, the size it's recommending. So we'll go back here, add a design from Canva, custom size. It says 200 by 200. Let's do it. And the name of this was, let's go back to our, it was kind of long. I give it just a second. Um, so let's go ahead and just grab some text here. I give it just a second. Um, so let's go ahead and just grab some text here. All right. I think I have, I'm trying to think of like a a font that I may already have on Jane's site. I don't have her brand kit, uh, I think inside of this account. Uh, so you would want to use your brand kit in Canva if you have that already, of course. Um, here we go. How to create deep connections and find a loving spouse. Um, so we'll say overcoming loneliness after divorce. That's probably not going to be the name that you settle on, uh, but we can say, um, we, we can, we can use that here. So overcoming loneliness and then we will create another one of these. And this is just a really quick way to create a logo uh, of words. And then divorce. I highly recommend using separate, um, blocks of text for this because it gives you a lot more space to play around. Try to shrink the, um, the blocks to the size of the word that you're using. That's a good place to start. So we will, I want to make this one all caps. And then this one will use like a nice, um, it's like some kind of a script. Like this one. Sure, why not? Right? Again, this isn't, I'm not giving you a design class. We have designers for that. And then we'll make after a little smaller. And then maybe not bold. And maybe divorce, we can have in, um, maybe this font and see what it looks like as an uppercase, right? So now we can play around with that. We can make this one a bit bigger. Right? And so if we like it, then we can kind of grab it all, center it both ways. And if we want to make it a bit bigger, we can do that as well. Perfect. Okay. So I'm going to send that to Get Oiling. That'll be what it is for now. But of course, you could spend just a touch more time. Now that you've got all your content uploaded, you don't have to worry about typing all of it. Um, you know, you can kind of copy paste from the outlines that you already have. Uh, you can justify a little bit more time on your design pieces. So once we've got that done, we can send it over and we're actually going to be utilizing this same stuff in two different places. That did something very strange, didn't it? Do you see that? It's weird looking. So we're just going to roll with it for now and pretend like this is quirky. Sometimes that does happen. So, uh, we'll go ahead and save these. We've got our main, uh, our cover photo and we've got our main photo. Uh, now we need to go in and this is our vault content. This is 1050 by 400. And so let's go in. And we're going to, oops, we're going to use our Canva button. And here this was 1050 by 400. And this would be the, uh, program modules is what we'll call it. So just like we did before, we'll put two blocks of texts, one for program, the other for modules.
How did you know the banner size to pick?
What's that?
How did you know the size to pick?
Yeah, um, I'll show you in just a second. When you hover over, it actually said that for, um,
Okay.
For that, you want to use the, um, yeah, it, it, it gives sort of the, the ideal size. So again, just like we did before, kind of shrink them down so that they don't have any extra stuff hanging over. And we'll go to font. And recently used. There's that guy. And this guy. Perfect. This is not your aesthetic by any means, but we're getting it done. Okay, so we'll drag them big. And this could be made really cute too. By the way, you really don't have to like be as quick and dirty as I'm being here, but I do want to make sure that I can answer as many questions as possible. So I'm going to pop our square in here. Our square is going to be white because we're actually going to give this background the same background as our content. So I'm going to send this to back. And then we're going to put this white behind here. So that we can read it. And it's not going to stay totally white, by the way, because that's not going to be cute. Uh, so we'll cover the text. And then we will go over here to the transparency, reduce it just a bit. And we've got something workable. All right. So we'll send that to Get Oiling and you could use the same setup.
Beautiful.
Yeah. So you can use the same setup for, uh, if you wanted to create your discussion room, you could follow the same formula there. And then everything, when people log into the vault, they'll see what they have access to, right? So now that we've got that, let's go ahead and save that again. And then, uh, one more step, we will go into the online class itself. And we will give it the same, where did it go? Here it is. So we're going to give it the same cover photo that we gave the vault because it's, it's the same experience. We don't have to create something new for this. And then the main photo, which is this very quirky little Canva error. Okay, so, um, so there we have it. Now what we can do is go back over here to Jane's member area. And we can see our image here. And when we visit, we have our background image, uh, is currently loading. There we go. We've got our, our image here. We've got our program modules. And when we click it, we've got again, that sort of repeated experience. So if I can do that crazy fast, like I just did, I know that in an hour of your own dedicated time, you can come up with something really nice. Um, that is a great starting point. So Colette, what kind of questions do you have, uh, after what you've seen or what do you think you're going to go do now?
I, I just wish you could see my jaw drop and my tear, if I was a crier, the tears of joy going down my face. That, I got it.
Fabulous.
Thank you. Thank you. You're an angel.
Oh, well, we love you and we'll talk.
High on my list.
All right. We'll talk to you soon, Colette.
Thanks.
All right. So very well. This is amazing. Excellent. Um, can we view what was just created? I hope that you did just see that. Uh, that was a question from a bit ago. So cool. Um, that's pretty awesome, right? Like you can create the entire outline for your online course. One other thing that I want to show you guys really quick, uh, and this is kind of a favorite for me, uh, is because for what I like to do when I'm setting up online, uh, courses, I don't typically, I've, I've got everything in my brain. It's all shoved in there and I need to get it out. And so I typically write outlines, right? Uh, and so when I'm ready to start creating something and get oiling, I've usually already written an outline or in some cases, and those of you who have worked with me, uh, privately before, uh, I'll have a Trello board that you're probably familiar with, that has, um, all of the information that's going to go into the program, uh, that I build and get oiling. Uh, and so what I'm doing when I get to get oiling is I'm doing a copy paste job from what I've been building in Trello or in an outline. And so if you are that person, if you follow that formula that I teach, and if you're in a track well, if you've been through the, how, how to build your online course, you're, you should be very familiar with that. Um, what I like to do is, um, with this brand new cool thing and big props to Greg for making this. Um, we can actually go and I'm going to delete one of these guys that's, um, that's a, a duplicate. So I can create a new thing for you. Uh, but I like to use this new, um, outline builder. It's such an exciting tool. So if I'm just going to scroll all the way down here and I'm going to delete this class just so that we, we've got some space. Okay. So I'm going to create a class and I'm going to start from my own outline. So I would give it the title. I know what the title is. What is the name of the module? This is optional. Uh, what's the name of the lesson? And then of course, what's the copy that's going to go into the lesson? So typically for me, I'm going to film a quick video for the, uh, for the lessons, uh, but that's if I'm teaching something, right? If I'm utilizing or gathering, uh, content that I already have, right? So maybe this, uh, maybe your idea, uh, is a ditch and switch course where we are talking about greening our laundry room, for instance. So the first module would be on, um, the toxins lurking in your closet. Right? And lesson one is, uh, know the bad guys. Right? Um, and then you can say, in this lesson, you're going to learn da, 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 da. And then maybe you want to say, um, what was your big aha moment? From this lesson. All right. So we add that lesson, then we add another one, right? And so I'm going to copy this and paste it here because it's the same module. So, um, and so then we'll say, develop a plan. Right? Um, or we could say, um, what the bad guys do, that would probably be the other thing you want to do, right? The bad. What the bad guys do. So we would say in this lesson, we're talking about, uh, effects on the body uh, and ecosystem. Right? And in this one, we would be talking about toxins in products. Right? Um, and this one, we may actually ask the same question. Or what was something new? You learned in this lesson. Uh, we'll add another one, right? And so, and maybe in this one, this will be, um, uh, the game plan. Right? And so this one would be a gather up the bad guys. And then this would be to, uh, identify and pull aside. Right? Um, of course you can add the discussion there. Yeah. Also in the game plan, we will have our, um, clean green checklist of recommended products, right? Maybe in the final module, uh, we'll have, um, cleaning plans. And so we'll have a kitchen one. Uh, we'll have a kitchen one. We'll just call it kitchen. Uh, we'll have another one in cleaning plans called bathroom, right? Right? So et cetera. So we're going to add all of this. And this is, this is how I personally like to build, uh, court, online courses. This, this allows me to take everything that I know that I want and get the majority of the typing stuff done all in one go. Ready, copy paste. And now I can go in and one at a time, just check all the boxes, make sure that it looks the way that I want to add the video if it's going to be there, embed a sway if it's going to be there. Uh, and, and really ultimately like perfect that experience. So we'll go ahead and hit create class. This is going to be, um, uh, this is going to be ditch and switch. There we go. And if you already have a vault, like maybe you have a place that you serve your members, you could pop this into there as well, instead of having to create a new vault. But now you have it. And if we, uh, we have to put it into a vault to view the class. Uh, but you can actually see when we see the, um, the category is there, right? The content, uh, the name of it is there. And, uh, and of course, you can see that we have, uh, discussion already enabled. And there is a copy, right? Pretty, pretty cool. Okay. There is a question here about, uh, a Roman sharing and convention. How many fans are going to be there? Are we going to see you? Julie and I are both going to be there, uh, and Jessica, who you met a few weeks back, one of our designers is going to be there as well. So we're going to be at booth number eight. Come see us. We can't wait to see you. Give you a high five and a hug, uh, whichever one you prefer or both. Uh, let me get into the Q and A here. Camelia says she, uh, she does already have a class with content ready. Um, so I think you're talking about, uh, Camelia about Colette's content. That is something that she and her husband have been working on as a sort of a brand offering. It's a, like a signature program that they're creating. I didn't know that it was that collect because she had a bunch of, uh, of, of initials behind your name that I didn't recognize. But as she, as soon as she spoke, I knew that was her. So she actually has a program that she's developing. Um, she and her husband, uh, are uniquely qualified to talk about that topic and they're wanting to build community around that intentionally. Uh, so that is her source of original content. Is that something that they've been working up together? And their goal is to, to really pour into and serve, uh, the community of Christian divorcees and, and help them to see and, and realize a life moving forward, uh, partnered, um, and, and, and then ideal, uh, way, right? And so of course, through that, she does intend to expose young living product and young living opportunity. But this is, this is really her putting herself, her values, her brand out there and building trust with people before ever even mentioning product. Because if you can imagine, if you could help somebody do that thing, which she is uniquely qualified to do. If she says, hey, if, if, you know, if, if you tell her, hey, I'm dealing with such and such issue and Colette says, hey, well, I've got a thing that's worked for me or that's worked for other clients, they're going to listen, right? More so than if, you know, she was just somebody on Facebook with an opinion, right? Um, it really does kind of set you, um, up, you know, as, as, as an authority, as you are. And everyone here, you are an authority in something. You are, uh, uniquely gifted. Right? Uh, and to, to be able to serve certain people, you are called probably, right? How many of us can say, I know that I am called to serve a group of people? If you do, make something to serve them, right? And don't worry about it being perfect because if you were made to serve them, whatever your first attempt is, is going to be helpful to someone and you're going to learn enough from it to make the next one better, right? All right. Jolene says, in the list of vaults, can you show where to edit the description of the vault? Because I can figure out how to edit one of mine. Yes, Jolene, let's go take a quick look at that. So if we go over here to, it's under vaults, uh, so we're going to go click vaults here. And I'll just, I'll click this one. And we'll scroll. Actually, if you hover over right here, this is what we were talking about. So if you hover over this little eye, it'll tell you what this does and where it shows up. Uh, so your visitors are going to see the summary before they go into the vault. So this is what's going to show up in the member area. So if you want to modify from the member area view, what it says about the vault before they click to enter it, this is where it's going to be, right here, where it says short vault summary. Thank you for that question. Okay, Colette says, that is one question. Um, how should I ditch the outline I've been working on? I could get stuck with trying to integrate what I've already been working on. My print outline is very long. Uh, you told me it could be three to 10 courses. It's true. Uh, and, and Claude, I know like we've, we've, we've got, uh, you're a private client of mine. So we, we've got some, some space and time to kind of dig that apart, which we should do when we talk next Friday, but, um, I think that where you think about what to put into an online course, um, and I know the depth of thought that you've put into this. And, and the, the scale to which you want to be really branding yourself. I mean, you are the, the Brené Brown of this topic, right? Uh, and so that means that you're going to have a massive body of work. And you have gone to great depth and put a lot of work and thought into, um, every single step that you want somebody to take, right? So for that reason, after reviewing your outline that I, I know that you're talking about right now, previous to this call, um, you have the opportunity to chop up that outline into multiple courses. And the reason why is because the course that you outlined, not what we just did today, that was a very simple, straightforward, lightweight, use it as a community kind of thing, right? It doesn't go super duper duper deep. Um, as you have already done the work, you've created multitudes of outcomes inside of one program. And typically you're going to get a better result selling somebody, something that they could see themselves accomplishing in the next handful of weeks, as opposed to the next handful of months or longer, right? If it smells like work, people might be less likely to do something with it, even if you can sell it to them effectively. Them selling themselves on showing up and doing the work to get something done, right? Because buying the information from you or even coaching from you isn't going to get them to do the work, right? It's, it's helpful to have things broken down into those smaller pieces. Okay, um, that was a structure for a mini course. So Cornelia, that could, it's, it's kind of open-ended, right? So basically what it's doing is it's giving you a map. You would go in and you would fill out a couple more paragraphs. You would plug in maybe some videos that you maybe already have, uh, or that exists somewhere else. This could be a place for you to start again, gathering some of the things that you maybe have from content providers that you work with, links to places, uh, gathering things, right? So it's kind of, it, what AI does for you is it creates the outline for the course. You go in and you plug in your additional information. I would keep this short and sweet, honestly. Um, i- if, if it's your first go around, think about something that you can help someone accomplish in the next 48 hours, right? What's something that they can do between 48 hours to a week, right? Where they can get a result. And so, um, so you can use AI in that instance to gather everything together. Um, or of course, when you're in that viewer, right? So once you use the AI input, if you like what it says, Or of course, when you're in that viewer, right? So once you use the AI input, if you like what it says. Now you're in the outline, once you've approved it, and you can go in and say, I wanna, I'm gonna add. I'm gonna expound upon what the AI has given me, right? It's not gonna give you the complete course, right? But you can absolutely use the AI writer to say, write me a lesson on how to whatever. So let's actually, let's go take a look at that real quick, right? So I'll go back over here. To our classes. And we'll use AI to actually go in and expand this even further. So let's go back to. Here we go. Our one with the with the funny image. Okay, so this first one is embracing your emotions, understanding loneliness. And what we'll do here. I'm gonna copy this. Alright, so we're gonna go to write with AI. Write lesson copy. And that's what I'm gonna ask it to do. I'm gonna hit enter a couple times and paste. That teaches. For an online course. That teaches. The student. How to acknowledge and embrace the emotions that arise from loneliness, empowering. Themselves. Okay, so write lesson copy. There we go. So let's see what it says. So you could absolutely use AI to expound upon this stuff a little more, give you some, some ideas to work with. And you could do this for each of them and still, I would think, be done in an hour. Now, I, there, there's obviously some interesting questions bordering around, you know, the topic of ethics, you know, do I sell something that was totally AI generated? Right? Or how much of it does it need to be me? Oh, look at that. I'm gonna copy this clipboard. My, my recommendation, especially where anything is going to. Where anything is going to have to do with young living or even mention young living, please make sure that you are reviewing. And and AI is not perfect in terms of of what it produces either. So make sure that you are reviewing what you're being given here by the yeah, the AI. And here, let's, let's paste this here. There we go. So we can actually repeat this for each. Again, I would review this, make sure that it is something that that feels. Right and in your voice and actually reflects what you would want to share. So that is how you could actually take the the couple of sentences that you are given. And and really turn them into something. Something more. Does AI, so AI does the outline to help us create a class with content to offer. That's right. And then, as I just demonstrated, you can use the AI again to create the lesson fully if you really wanted to. Anna, is it easier to create separate courses separately before moving on to the next or do AI all at one time for each course and then all the other steps? To get them set up after that. It's a good question. My personal preference is to is is one course at a time. Just because, as you saw when I was working on Colette's example. We're taking the the description for the course. For, sorry, to use the correct terminology inside of Get Oiling, we're using the description for the online class. And we're also putting it into the vault, right? And then we're also taking that description that we've got in the vault and we're probably gonna be putting it on the payment page as well, right? Or maybe on the sales page that you'll build or the landing page that you'll use to get people into the vault, depending on how you plan to offer it. So I would recommend if you're going to be batching your activity, to batch the production of one vault at a time. Because that's going to get you the most cohesive result. Without you kind of losing focus on the thing that you're building, because you can go in and have outline into the system. Course or sorry, online class created, vault created, online class goes into vault. And then you go in and you do your images, you apply them to both, you set up how you want to share it, and now you can start letting people in. Right? So you would do that, you would repeat that workflow. So do one vault. And then do another vault, right? Or if you have one vault where you're gonna have multiple online classes inside of it, then yeah, by all means, do one online class. Do the next online class. And then you could just brand them separately. Okay, Colette, so does this mean we do not need to purchase something like Jasper since Get Oiling now offers it? I have never personally used Jasper, so I'm not really familiar with exactly what it does. But if it's an AI writer. No, you don't need it because we have it. And and it works pretty well. And the cool thing is too, our AI knows that you're a young living brand partner. Right? So it will often. Make those suggestions, like kind of gearing in the direction of sharing young living or recommending young living product, which is pretty cool. Obviously, it doesn't do that one hundred percent of the time, but if you were, just test this out, right? Go in and say, you know, write me a blog post, for instance, write me a thousand word blog post. In a, in a fun. Fun irreverent tone, talking to moms of toddlers about how to. I don't know, why, why they should not use the regular cleaning products at the store. And it's going to talk about young living. If you, it it might not the first time, sometimes it does, but it it actually will often bring up young living and it might bring up thieves. Right? Which is pretty cool. So yeah, I I don't think that you would need a, an additional AI. Tool. And plus, you have like. What you call, I mean, ChatGPT is free right now, but again, you don't need it because Get Oiling right with AI is is already there. Do you have a different, do you have a cheat sheet with the different questions that the Get Oiling AI understands? That's a good question, and it may be one that. That we can take to our team, because we we do have that sort of master data of like what's being asked. But generally speaking, it's. I think that the the trick to getting it right is to, is to use it, right? And to see where are they getting it wrong, right? And then learn how you can communicate with it differently, right? There, I, I'm sure that there will one day be a cheat sheet. I find that it understands pretty well. If I'm asking clearly and I'm saying, write a blog post. For this type of person with this many words and and make sure that it covers these four topics. And then, and then finally make sure that it gives a call to action at the end to download my guide that does this. And if you give it those things, just make sure you're telling it, do this and this and this, put all the parameters in. And and it's generally pretty solid at doing that. So I don't know if you were with us, I think you were for our. Our initial AI training that we did here, we have, well, the one for for our right with AI feature. I know we did one on ChatGPT before we we got that feature. Set up and get failing. So definitely be sure to check that out as well. And I think it would be helpful too, as as we are all using this and learning how to use this together more effectively. If you find that there are prompts that you're using regularly that are getting you great results and you'd be, you know, open to sharing that with the community. Then then please, guys, by all means, head over into our Facebook group. This is all something that we can really benefit from, from knowing and growing with together. And thank you for that great question, Cornelia. I wish I had a better answer than that. So let me see. Awesome. This does help to remove writing blocks, Camelia. That's absolutely right. You don't have to worry about, you know, all of the. There's, there's so much. There's so much that our ego does to us, right? There's so many ways that it lies to us and keeps us from doing the things that we were really made to do. Isn't that true? So when you can say, do this for me, and then you're like, yeah, no, that's exactly right. Now let me say it how I would say it, right? There's not a lot of new knowledge, right? In the world, there, there's, there's perspectives, there's flavors, right? There's, and there's trust, right? People are going to listen to you, even though, yeah, they could probably go to YouTube and Google and pull or or AI. And pulled together similar answers that you might give them. But people are only going to be receptive in the moment that they're receptive and to the people that they trust, right? And so none of this obviously is going to step in and take the role of of having a relationship and being a good human. Does, you know, for, for, for the outcomes that you're looking for. But it is a really, really powerful way for you to be able to quickly get out of that mind trick. That there's something wrong with you and what you have to say, because moving forward is what gets you to where you want to go. Alright, so we don't need to train the AI, but no, so Bridget. I don't know, and and this is more of a Greg question. I don't think that the AI bot is going to know you super well, but we do, I know for sure that we have on our wishlist. Ways for you to add some like standard inputs. So that you can customize it a little better, but it does absolutely know that you're a young living brand partner and it knows what that means. Right? So that, to that end, it is trained. We do have, we do have wishlist items that allow you to give some more context at the individual user level. Okay, how would you tie in together a lead magnet to a Zoom link? To that Zoom link being sent to them by email and then another email after a class is overstating. Thank you. So this is a good question. Can I, if you raise your hand, I can bring you out to chat and we can talk through it. Let me know if that is, okay, cool. I'm gonna bring you out. Hi.
Hi.
Alright, what's your name? Yeah.
Lisa.
Hi, Lisa. Awesome. So, okay, so tell me, tell me what we're trying to do here.
Okay, so I want to teach a class that would be given via Zoom. But what I would like to do is like put it out into like the social medias that this class is gonna be offered. And then people would come to, you know, like a lead magnet, they would come to an area where they would type in their name and their email. And then the Zoom link would be given to them with, you know, instructions and such on the class. And then, once the class is held, then another email would need to go out to them stating, you know, thank you for joining and, you know. All other information that I would have there.
Beautiful. So this is a scheduled live Zoom that you're doing, right?
Right.
Okay, perfect. So what we'll do is first things first, we're gonna create a campaign. Are you giving them a download or something? Is that the lead magnet you're talking about?
Yes, the lead, it was so. They would, so I didn't know if I should give them the download after the class or before the class, probably before the class, because then they can follow it along, right? So yes, there would be a download for them previous. And maybe even have, you know, my slides, offer them my slides that we had done during the class.
Yeah, and that's something you could send after. I love that idea. Okay, so what is, what's the name of the class?
Um, well, it's gonna, it's so, it's on EMS. So it's gonna be like the initial names I would, I guess, would be like how to perform the medical assessment.
Okay. And what is the date of the live event?
I don't have one yet.
Okay.
So I guess we could just, you know, make one up for now.
Okay, yeah, let's just pretend it's August first. I'm gonna copy this and I'm gonna paste it. I don't even know what day of the week it is. That's okay. So we're gonna, we're gonna create the campaign. So this is your order of operations. You want to create the campaign first. Because the campaign is what's gonna do everything that you want it to do. So we'll create the new message and this is going to be. Welcome. You're registered. And we'll say download inside. And so here we'll say a date, time, topic. And then we'll say, here's your download. And then you'll actually go over. Here. And you will upload the file or if you already have it in your system, I will just pop that in there. And here, let me make this style, I'll make it a button. And then we'll change this to download. Right? So obviously, you'll you'll put some more information in here. So this is just gonna register them whenever they sign up. We're just gonna say, hey, you did it. Congratulations. Just reiterate their date and time.
Okay.
You'll create another message and this is going to be. Reminder. Our call is tomorrow, right? So this is, you know, you put date, time, topic, etc., anything that you want to say. Finally, we'll have one more that says. Our call is soon and that's gonna be, we're gonna send that an hour before. So our call is soon, right? And this is where we put the Zoom link, date, time, topic, Zoom link, right? And then you would actually paste the Zoom link in here. And and then, of course, maybe also just add the download again. And I would do that in the previous email to this one. And then finally, the last one that we want to send out is gonna be the day after. So that's one more message and that is going to be. Thanks for coming. And then any other information you want to say, there's a message here and then we would have our. And then slides download here and then you would pop your download in there for the slides. And again, any other information that you want to share. Now, the final thing that we want to do with this campaign is to make it date based. So what we would do here is that if our call is going to be on the first of August. Then we need this to be, let's go to August. I believe we need to start this on the thirtieth. Because here, this is gonna be one. This is gonna be two. And this is going to be three. There we go. So yeah, we started it two days before because we are sending a reminder. So when they sign up, they're gonna get this message immediately with the download. Then the day before the call, hey, remember our call is tomorrow. And then this, our call is soon. We do want to go to advanced settings here. And let's just say if our call is at eight PM central time, then we're gonna send this out at seven PM.
Okay.
Central time, right?
Okay.
And then this would send out the following day and you can specify. So if you want to send it out in the morning, send it out in the morning, etc. So the other thing that you would, really the final thing that you would need to do is just to create a landing page. Or an event on your Good Oiling site, right? And in any case, you're going to attach, you're gonna apply this campaign to the people who register on the landing page. Or who, who RSVP for the event.
So how would I create that landing page?
Yeah, so you can.
I'm so.
Oh, you're good. No, it's totally fine. This is so simple and and that's why I wanted to make sure to show you, because we're gonna do this inside of ten minutes. So we'll create a landing page. And we'll use, I love this simple short form. You don't really have to come up with a lot to say. So we'll say. So this is event title. This would be. Come on. Here we go, date. What am I doing here? Okay. Perfect. I'm not usually on this small computer. Alright, so this is event title. Perfect. Then down here, we would put the date. Time. Enter your info now and get your. Download right away, right? Date, time, and then we'll say location. Zoom, right? So you can go into Canva and, you know, create an image here, right? That just, you know, is is for your event. Or or just something that is evocative of it. You don't have to create something, you can just use something that already exists. So we'll go to settings here and this is how to perform a medical. Assessment. Right? And then we'll go find that campaign that we made.
Okay. Right, and then make the landing page.
Correct.
Okay.
Yep. And then the final thing, make sure you tag them, right? And then, and then, yeah, where you want to go is if you have a, just like a standard confirmation page. If you don't have one yet, I'll show you a course that you can pop into and grab a template that you can use. But just use a confirmation page that you'll send them to. It's basically saying, hey, go check your email. You're signed up. Go check your email. So then we save this.
Okay.
And and you're done. That's it.
Okay.
Yep, it's, it's, it's as simple as that. And then what you would want to do and and one thing that I didn't. One thing that I didn't show you that we should go take a look at is in our campaign. That we created, you will want to grab your Zoom link that you create in in your Good Oiling account. That is technically step one, right? Is you, you want to, you want to schedule the Zoom. So if this is gonna be on August first. Uh, and this is going to be at eight PM, August first. Uh, and it's an hour. We'll mute people on entry and allow them to choose to turn their video on, and this is uh, our how to perform a medical assessment. All right, so that's done. And basically, what we're going to want to do is copy the link. And in our campaign. In our campaign, we can actually go in and paste that link to join, right? So we would put that in this call as soon.
Okay.
And we could even, uh, so join here, we'll say, join here. And we'll hit the his, this guy here, and then paste in that Zoom link, and you're good to go.
Okay.
Yep, and that would make it complete. So you're just basically create your Zoom link, um, create your campaign, make sure it's date based. Uh, and then put that Zoom link into the campaign and then just create a landing page that applies the campaign to somebody when they sign up.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you did it. All right, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Sure thing, sure thing. Awesome. I hope that that was um, relevant. I know that was relevant to you guys, because everybody here wants to host a one-time live event from time to time, right? Uh, if you, especially if you want to do something live, host a class, et cetera. So uh, glad we were able to pop through that really quickly. Um, and the, um, and real quick, I I actually promised to show uh, that confirmation page template that I mentioned, along with a couple of other really important templates that you should have. If you don't have your website fully set up, you're going to find by going to my account settings and going over here to the brand, my business workshop. If you are a member of the Get Oil and Community, meaning you have a Get Oiling account, you have access to this, and there are templates in there uh, to help you get started. All right, so uh, thank you, everybody, for sticking around. I know we went a little bit longer uh, than usual, but I'm glad that we could help. We'll be back next week. And if you have ideas for topics, things that you want to learn how to do, let us know. We will create a call just like this one to help figure out how to do what it is that you want to do, or we'll direct you to something that probably already exists, because we do this a lot. So thanks for being here. We'll be back the same time next week. Take care, everybody.